I'd like to call to order the Board of Education meeting for Tuesday, March 8th. If everyone would stand and recite the Pledge of Allegiance with me.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Right, we have Board members present, Tammy West, Jeff Hires, Barbara Lund Dean, Lisa Killian, and Tracy Rankin-Bisso. We have adoption of agenda including the supplemental personnel report.
Make a motion, we accept the agenda including the supplementals.
Second motion by Jeff and a second by Tammy, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
And approval of bills. Do we know, Ryan looked them over?
He did review the bills and he sent us an email indicating he, all questions were answered and he'd recommend their approval.
Make a motion to approve bills. Motion by Tammy and a second by Barbara, all in favor?
Aye.
And this evening, we have no special presentations and as far as STUCO reports, we have Jay Sean, oh, we do have Yvonne, go ahead, Yvonne.
Good afternoon, everyone. I'd like to thank you all for being here. I don't have much to say today, so I'll just start off by saying that we haven't had a STUCO meeting recently and our next one will be after spring break, or I say preferably, but yeah, preferably on Wednesdays when we're planning on doing that. So to recap what's happened, winter homecoming, it was, it was great. Dayton McGordy and Brianna Bradshaw won that, congratulations to them. And then really the biggest thing that we focused on this past month and are trying to continue that on is the SAFE program at school and that stands for seat belts are for everyone. Really, I'm really proud of the freshman class who's really stepped up to make this program go and, you know, I've, I've seen them grow and they've taken a lot of leadership in this and that's not something I asked, they just did it. So I'm very proud of them for that and I'd like to give a shout out to Officer Kramer for helping us out with that. And that concludes my report, thank you for your time.
Thanks, Yvonne. Next up, we have Jay Sean from Dodge City Middle School.
Hi, everybody, how are you guys doing today?
Good.
Alright, mine's not very long either. Last Friday, favorite, last Friday, was a dodgeball for heart tournament and we raised around nineteen hundred dollars. We had so much fun at the dodgeball tournament. I got hit in the head a couple times, but it's alright, I was lighting people up too. February was the month NJHS raised money for pennies for patients. Our different teams competed to see who could raise the most money. Our seventh grade Odyssey team ended up raising the most money. Friday, March 2nd, our seventh and eighth grade band orchestra and choir students went over to Comanche. Our eighth grade band did especially good, getting a one from all three judges, the best score. So we're proud of them and that's it for my presentation today. Any questions?
Jay Sean, what did you say you raised money for?
Pennies for patients, February.
Thank you.
Right, recognition of visitors. Persons may present ideas or concerns regarding USD 443 schools. No action will be taken by the Board at this meeting. Personalities and behavior of employees are not to be presented during this period, but are to be reported to the employee's immediate supervisor. The President shall determine the amount of time to be spent for citizen participation. And if you'd like to address the Board, please approach the podium at this time. No one jumping up, so we'll move right ahead. We have, next up, the consent agenda. That includes the approval of personnel, including the supplemental personnel report, approval of minutes for the February 22nd, 2016 Board of Education meeting, approval of Head Start, early Head Start Ford County grant application for Bright Beginnings, the 2016-17 pre-K continuation grant for Bright Beginnings, approval of Kansas Early Head Start Child Care Partnership Grant, again, Bright Beginnings, approval of the Kansas Early Head Start Home Visitation Grant, Bright Beginnings, approval of NEA Book Across America Library Award Grant Application from Ross, approval of carpet bid, approval of architectural services for sunny side roof replacement, approval of cafeteria table bid, and finally renewal of the Halton Mifflin Services.
Bill, how come, how come you think we only got one bid on the carpet?
Candidly, a lot of our local vendors are really set up more for residential and small business. It's a large, large area to deal with and really in a very reduced amount of time. The other thing is there's, it seems to be a lack of people for a variety of subcontractor roles in western Kansas. There is a group out of Hayes that's bid sometimes, they just didn't bid this year. And this firm's pretty aggressive on pricing and I think maybe they just, they've just beaten the other firms often enough that they just don't bid. We even tried to break it up one year into smaller segments and we were not successful doing that, so. We send it out, we try.
Yeah, I guess you did everything you could do. It, it looks like a fairly reasonable bid for that much carpet.
It really, it, price came in pretty well where we expected and so, I mean, it's, I think it's even a little bit under budget, not much, but I mean, it's, it's kind of right there and candidly, we've had pretty good luck with the firm, they get in, get out, take care of us, really not issues, so.
Yeah, I was just curious if there was anything about the job that was out of the ordinary?
I'll be candid, we could use a lot more subcontractors, not only in carpet, but about ten other fields in southwest Kansas. It's just tough getting people. And even though I think we're going to be very aggressive on a lot of the pricing for our projects, a lot of our subs are going to be coming out of Wichita, which means you're going to be paying per diem and your prices of the projects go up.
Remember how many vendors we sent the bid packet out to?
I don't know.
We usually include that in the Board packet and I forgot to check on that.
And we, and we sent it to all the local people, I mean, we always do and we just...
That's fine, I was just, it was just odd to me to only get one bid.
A second. We have a motion by Barbara and a second by Tammy, all in favor?
Okay, good.
Okay. Next up, we have the approval of the applicant to fill the vacant position for the USD 443 Board of Education. We received five applications for the position and I'll just start off by saying that I'd, I'd like to thank the members of the community that applied and that showed an interest in filling the vacant position on the Board of Education. This is an unpaid position that requires, I thought it was worth mentioning, that requires significant time from Board members. And to have five excellent candidates to choose from really speaks well of our community and of the citizens individually. I'd like to publicly thank Sarah Dahl Heckey, Joe Finley, Greta Clark, Brian Mashick, and David Castorline. Having said all that, I personally would like for us to consider Brian Mashick for the position. Brian ran for the school board in the last election. He's attended school board meetings to learn more about what's going on in the district. He also visited individually with both Alan and myself to get a better understanding of what's required of a Board member, as well as to ask questions about the district. Brian's requested to be added to the list that receives a copy of the Board agenda in order to acquaint himself with the issues the Board is dealing with. In my opinion, he's shown a true interest in having a Board member. Because of that interest, I would like to make a motion that we select Brian Mashick to complete the term.
I'll second that.
By Lisa and a second by Jeff.
Aye.
We have three. Well, I was more going towards Greta Clark. Her experience on serving on other boards and her experience with that and her passion for community and education. I, I agree that I think Greta would be a phenomenal Board member.
I have a question, Madam President.
Yes, yes.
Tracy, how did you vote? Did you vote yea or nay?
For Brian.
I did for Brian, yes.
Okay, that's, have to have four votes, okay.
Has to be a majority of the Board.
I think Greta would be exceptional. My concern about Greta is that we already have Ryan and myself. That makes it kind of, that was my... But we're, we're employees, we're not serving. All in favor, favor of Greta Clark to be the next to fill the position for...
Last time was awkward.
I think that...
In, in...
All opposed, I guess we...
I see, I mean, I, I see your point. I mean, I guess I wasn't thinking of her as an employee of the college.
Perhaps what we need to do is, is abilitate.
Didn't get a vote, we didn't have a public vote from Tracy.
Basically, we didn't have a public vote from you?
Honestly, I'm having a hard time hearing, so I didn't hear all that, I apologize.
I'm sorry. Go ahead, I didn't hear you.
I was having a hard time hearing a little bit of that. My voice hurt, but Greta, it, it got kind of garbled.
Okay, there was a motion made nominating Greta Clark. Do you vote yea or nay?
Nay.
Okay.
I think perhaps what we need to do is wait until the entire Board is ready.
You know, the sad part is I would be happy with any of the five, you know, I mean, I think that's, so I hate voting up or down for anybody.
I agree.
That's not fair, but it's what we have to do.
And I understand your point, I mean, like I said, I hadn't thought about it, I guess as...
We need a motion to table this?
So, a silly question is, so can we put a motion back on for Brian?
For the Board? Yeah, you can do whatever we want.
I mean, I hate to put this off another few weeks. Like, I agree with what Jeff said, I mean, I don't think you can go off all our candidates. So, I'll put another motion. Jeff?
Aye.
Okay.
And again, I do want to thank
Thank you very much.
All of you for making the application and being willing to serve. Like Jeff said, it's difficult to sit up here and I appreciate everything that you all have done to help us out. Okay, moving on. Curriculum and instruction, we have the Kansas State assessment information.
Test scores, they're very exciting.
Good.
Good evening, everyone, Mr. Superintendent, Board President, Board members. We'll start out on page fifty-five. That talks about, all that, all that page does is talk about the testing schedule and what we're faced with as far as testing the kiddos. And you can see we're starting, I don't know when the window opened, March, about the first week in March or March 8th about, no, when did the window, two weeks ago, three weeks ago, four weeks ago? Okay, I don't have it in front of me, I don't see it at least. February twenty-second, and we're going to test all the way through May eleventh. On Thursday, the MDPT, which is means the multi-disciplinary performance task, and I'll talk about that in a little bit on a slideshow, ends on Thursday and I have to report it went real well, the state broke it up this year and it seemed to be the system didn't keep up, so they, they kind of just, I think, broke it up. The writing first and the performance task in math first and then the regular window opens up the sixteenth and it goes all the way to about May eleventh. So, the consideration sheet just talks about the testing schedule and all the different tests we're taking. Bear with me just a little bit. Over a slideshow. I don't want to go over it, over. CAP is what it's called, Kansas Assessment Program, that's what the acronym stands for now for the rest of my career, ten fifteen. But, that's, well. I want to talk about the new CAP level, Kansas Assessment Program levels, they, they don't call them proficient, not proficient. Level one, level two, level three, level four. And in your packet, you have this particular sheet, I want you to have it later on when I call up the actual data so we can talk about that. The level one, student is below grade level, level two, on grade level, and then level three on track, college and career level readiness, and then exceeds. And my opinion on this compared to the old standards, I would say the lower part of three, mid-three, was what we were used to seeing, level five. Because the level fives used to be, chime in if I'm saying something not correct, the level five used to be those kids were ready for anything. The way I think we saw the data come out in the end. So keep that in mind as you look at these things. As far as proficient and not proficient goes here, I don't know where that's going to be, they're going to decide that in the summer. I'm hoping somewhere in the middle range of the lower level one or something like that, when they set standards to do the focus school and stuff. That's what I understand at my last meeting, which was last Tuesday in Topeka. But we'll see how that goes. And you, right now, we're, last year, now we're talking about last year's data on how they evaluated how we did. Next two slides are very important to understand, the next three or four slides. So, they call annual measurable objectives. And last year, all they looked for is those two bold ones, graduation rate and participation rate. That's all they looked at. They're going to, soon, this year, they're going to bring in some more. They don't know for sure which one, but it's reducing the not proficient mark, which goes back to some of those that we were used to.
Last year, the scores weren't, they count, but they were the foundation scores because it was the first year for new assessments. So that way, they didn't hold you accountable the first year you saw this assessment. They're going to use those as the scores to build on the baseline.
Hey, so those two things, in the next two slides, I want to make sure you understand. The state set forth criteria that we have to do to meet whatever the median annual measurable objective. Well, this slide shows, that's the graduation rate, and you can see how they calculate way back from the thirteen, fourteen. I, they're clear on the right side and up, up above, I have very big key, I have to read that right side. And what you want to look for today is, oh, you won't find any, which means we did what the state set forth to do, we did what they said we should do. And the dash means it's not applicable, that means we didn't have that many students. Graduation rate, all that's important right there, there's not any NOs there.
State says you have to have a group of at least thirty students classified as a group, that way they can't be easily identifiable by individual students.
Now, I combined for ease of reading on this slide, and again, all you want to see is green, you don't want to see any red. Chance of not having a focus school in my mind and additional priority school. Have any NOs, we met all the criteria. I combined on the chart ELA and math, but if you look at it, the charts are important, that's what we were supposed to do last year, we did it. These are the actual scores, usually over the last year since I've been here since 2006, we just reported to you one number for math and one number for reading. I broke it up to by grade level, the bottom is the grade and it shows the level ones, the level twos, the levels three. Chart, you see what those charts mean? Is this the ELA? And here are the cut scores. Somewhere in level one, if, if they score a level one, the child could have anywhere from a two-twenty to two-seventy-five if we look at the ELA and in math also in third grade. It fluctuates a little bit and the colors are coded according to what you have in your chart, you can follow that along here in just a little bit. Keep that in mind also.
Ray, I might, I might point out, it's something to notice up there if you're into numbers like Ray and I tend to be. The yellow portion up there has a fifty-five point spread, to be in the yellow, but if you look at the next one, it's a twenty-three point spread, a twenty-six point spread. Big spread again.
Yeah, I'm gonna be real, I'm not following it all. I'm not, I, I, I'm...
This, in order to get, for a third grader in English Language Arts to get a score that's yellow, to get a below grade level, their score on the assessment had to be between two-twenty and two-seventy-five, okay? To get a green, their score had to be two-seventy-six to two-ninety-nine.
That's what we'll do next, is to look at the actual data by student.
That's what I want to get to.
This is part of our data system that we're building house and I have it all ready to go here, I hope, and I hope the technology works great. And I can go in here, as you look on the right side up above, I click yes, that means... So when I choose ELA, third grade, and general, the general assessment and hit go, the data will pop up and that's what we're going to talk about. I'm going to filter down to just the level ones by clicking on the level one here and I'm going to sort by level one. Now, notice, notice the chart where those, that black bar comes down, what Mr. Cunningham was saying, the yellow has that much of a range and the, look at the green and the blue and then the purple, the ranges. That's what I want to point out today. I took the third grade math, I mean, ELA, as you can see on the left side there, third grade and the general assessment, I didn't bring in the TESLAD kids or to not test it. We have some that didn't test, the scores count against us because the parent opted out and stuff like that. So I filtered it down to try to make a point with this data. This is the scale score that we, you see from two-twenty to two-seventy-five. You see that two-twenty here to two-seventy-five because they scored a level one. If they were being the green, then that would move to the green level. And that bar shows where they fall within that level, that yellow. Easy to understand, right? The point I want to make here, I sorted from least to greatest coming down and you don't have to go very far here, maybe, I don't know, fifteen students, you can see these students are on the high side of the one. So, I talked to Mr. Cunningham about this a lot and we, over the years, we feel like if the, if the people take those kids, there's two or three more problems, they'll be over the hump into the green and then they can move on from there. And that's what I want to show here, we don't have very many kids, that first two or five or ten maybe, that first one has got a problem.
English Language Arts, he could be a non-English speaker or a limited English speaker and we don't have the option, don't have the option.
Well, over there on the right, I have some fields up there, it seems like a regular student that I, was probably lazy that day, I don't know. But this is, this is what we can do with the data. Let me pull up grade five here and do the same thing.
Kids are, didn't have anybody down.
Well, I, I'm at...
I'm sorry, you weren't, you weren't down.
Yeah, this is the top of the screen.
We had a bunch of kids that were with...
Look, I don't have to scroll very far where, where this bullet moves over. And look at, you have at least half of them right there and if you look at the number, the score is two-seventy-two, that they scored and the high, if they scored and it's two-seventy-four, they need to move over to them. So you can see, guys, all you gotta do is take whip and one whiplash and we're there. I, I'd like to change now to math and if you're not impressed with this, I, I'm going to do third grade math. And the same thing, this is all... And the same thing, this is all programmed, just easily button and easily filter. Look, this is the top end of third grade math. In my mind, you have two students there that are the bottom end of the ones. And everybody else from there on is the high end, and even on my little screen...
About five hundred plus third graders.
Now, even on my little screen, you can, you don't have to scroll very far, you're almost there in the green. I think Mr. Cunningham has something to say about, a theory at least.
Students, and I'm, this is a commercial, so I'll be open and honest about it. The students who took the third grade assessments last year were really the first group of students who have had our new math program, the Engage New York program, for more than one year. And when you look, compared to third grade scores, I think on the graphs that you had before the bar graphs, we had fewer students in level one in third grade than any of the others. So we know, we surmise, we, we, we both, we all believe that it's because of the rigor that's included in that math curriculum that is enabling those kids to achieve higher levels. And so, once we get a group of students, add that for more than one or two years, or three years, or four years. State testing just begins in third grade. We think that was a good choice on behalf of the district to get the kids into that program. Shows on our results. Good teaching, good curriculum, you can do good things.
You want to see more, I mean, we can go on forever, but to get the idea, what I'm trying to present is, when we look within the levels and the ranges, and you see how far the range is, it's pretty clear we don't have, there's some work to do, that's for sure, but it's going towards into the green. And as people start learning what this looks like and practice Engage New York, whatever they're doing, bound to get better.
We're only showing you the kids in level one, if we pulled up the level twos and the level threes.
I can pull up level threes and see. I'll, I'll pull up level three and show, take a look at this, this is also impressive. That's again, the third graders, there's, um... I see there's a hundred and fifty kids in level three, and look how close they are going into the blue, into the purple. Barely, they're right on the border. I don't think we have very many fours.
Teachers have access to this data, and they can see it by the students in their classrooms. So they know specifically which students need to work in which areas, and can use that to plan instruction for those kids. Hopefully, they'll even experience greater success on this year's assessment.
I can talk a little bit about that. This data flows in and follows the kids wherever they're placed in a different screen. It follows to wherever, if one child in third grade moves from Lynn to Beeson today in the morning, that data will be there for that teacher to see in just this same kind of format. Also, I, I'm pretty pleased over the years since two thousand six I've been in the district. And I think I'm, I would have to say I'm pretty pleased on how the data is used. If I would say, if I would gauge it against the calls I'm getting to my office for different kinds of screens and different kinds of reports. I would, I would just have to say it's being used pretty good. Calls that I'm getting and the requests I'm getting for the different reports, matching it up against the, against our Engage New York, against SMI, SRI, all that kind of stuff.
Assessment tool did the state choose? Chose to go our own, we had to be independent, so we could go with either the park or the... They had the research park department at Kansas University, out sample items, built our own Kansas assessment. Based on some of the same curriculum standards, but KU is also doing several others for several other states. Greater and greater results as we go through the next...
Questions, that's...
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, we have middle school music festival update from Rachel Trombley.
Very good.
We had our musical, we had our music festival last Wednesday, all day. We started having kids show up at seven-thirty in the morning, and it lasted until six o'clock that night. And that was not because we ran behind, but that's because we had so many schools and children participate. We had over a thousand students in our building by the end of the day. We had eleven schools participating, that's all of the schools in our WAC league, as well as Larned and Maxville also came. And they just kind of heard about it and said, hey, can we come too? So we had a lot of kids that day. That also included twenty-three music departments, so that was band, choir, orchestras. So it was twenty-three departments that we had to get, that we got through that day. We had over forty large ensembles participate that day. Some schools brought two or three large ensembles per department, so we had a lot that day. We found that it was a great need, and we got a story from Great Bend that this is the first festival they've been able to attend in ten years. So because there's not been a festival in our league or in our area that could, especially one that could house such large schools, they had not been able to go to a festival for ten years. So this was something that was a, it was a big need, and we didn't know how big of a need. We, we had found a substitute festival here in Dodge to attend for a while, till we got too big. And, but they had not been able to do that, so that was something that was very encouraging for us. We received several positive comments, we've heard from Garden City, both schools, Hays, DCMS, and Liberal West have all responded back this week with a, a big thank you, and that they enjoyed the festival, that it was well organized, and they're excited to attend next year. We would actually, as CMS would like to extend, that we will be happy to help DCMS in any way next year, since it will be their year to host. And we know with construction beginning on their building too, that could be a little bit tricky. So we're welcome opening ourselves up to helping them in any way possible. We spent some time on Friday during our PLC time, and we sort of debriefed our whole festival. Did find that there were a few things that maybe could work a little bit better, and we decided that we would like to meet together this summer. We did find out that we have an MSWAC league website, and we would like to go ahead and start to, since we've got the time now, and we've tried it all out once, we would like to get all of our documents, including our handbook, which I think you guys got a copy of tonight. We would like to get that turned over so that it's not so school-specific, but that it will be league-specific, and that we'll be able to turn it back and forth. As it switches from building back and forth, it's not such a building-specific document, but more of a, this is what we're gonna do for the league, and these are gonna be the rules and the guidelines for the whole league. We did, but the entry fees that we received, we received three thousand fifty-three dollars. The cost was twenty to pay all of their judges, any housing. We did actually house our judges in a lot of homes. The judges that came from, we had a couple that came from Wichita, one that came from Cheney. Some that came a little bit further, we housed them, we did host families, and the judges really enjoyed that. They enjoyed getting to be in one of our teachers' homes. They found some common connections and people that they knew, and really enjoyed having those home-cooked meals, and just, just kind of relaxing in someone's home the night before the festival, and it really worked out well for us. So that kind of kept our cost down, but it was twenty-one hundred dollars by the time we did all the supplies, all the certificates. Every student that received a, a superior rating or an excellent rating all received a certificate. So by the time we put all of those things, have paid for those things, it was twenty-one hundred dollars that it cost us. So we did, we were left with a little bit of money. The total concessions that we had that day, we have three thousand seven hundred and thirty-eight dollars. And that unfortunately, as of right now, I, we haven't paid the bill yet. But we, we think that we'll be left with around two thousand dollars. We used our cafeteria and variety vending to do all of those things. And what's really great about those is that anything that you don't use, it's returnable. So it was nice that, we only ended up with about two cases of pop, I think were about the only thing that was left. We actually ran out of some food by the end of the day, and so that's all returnable, and it's no loss for us, being able to use those companies that we already have contracts with. So that was very nice. We think that the, the bill's gonna be around seventeen hundred dollars, and will, which will leave us with about two thousand dollars. So we now have a nice fund, a seed fund here that we can now fund the festival as we get it back and forth. And the possibility too, we've discussed with some of that money, starting to buy some electric pianos. Here in Dodge City, because we are such a central location, we just about host every music festival now that is in, done in our entire area, whether it's high school or middle school. I don't know of any, other than the, the marching band, WAC marching band rotates. But otherwise, we pretty much host everything, also for Southwest KMEA. And we're seeing a real need for having pianos. So we're, electric pianos that we can use, that are easily, easy to move, and we can use in the buildings that we need them for. So that's something that, we're going to put forth some of this money to possibly buy a piano for that, so that we have one more resource. And then lastly, we had several businesses in the community that got back to us and said that they had an increase in profits that day, and that they were very glad. We did tell some of the businesses that were close to Comanche, hey, we're about to have a music festival, there's gonna be, you know, a lot of kids. We were thinking seven hundred kids, we had over a thousand. Where have a lot of schools come, and so you may see an increase in business that day. We did get back to the, with the quick shop and a couple of the fast food restaurants on Wyatt Earp, and they all said that, thank you very much for giving us that heads up, we did see an increase in sales that day. So it was kind of a nice thing for our community as well.
Had a thousand kids at Comanche?
We have a thousand kids. It was a little crazy.
And you put on a program for a thousand kids for twenty-one hundred dollars? That's impressive.
Lot of, lot of volunteers.
That's, that's incredible.
And we did, CMS has a great staff there, incredible, down to our secretaries who did the scheduling, and they paid the bills for us, and kept up with our judges to, you know, every teacher either was monitoring a classroom of some sort, running around the building picking up rating sheets or something. We didn't have any, any problems at all, they were all so excited to be able to have that in our school. They're a pretty incredible bunch of people, if you've never been in our building and don't know that already.
That's great, that's, that's tremendous, thank you.
Well, and thank you guys so much for allowing us to do it and giving us that day to do that, because it was really incredible, and it touched a lot of kids, so we're thankful.
Make it in time for Bandarama, or?
If I hurry. When it's never over for a music teacher, right?
Thank you for the update.
Thank you very much, Rachel.
Approval of purchase of lot for Dodge City High School Building Trades, Bill?
President, Mr. Superintendent, members of the board. We do have a Buildings Trades Program that Dodge City High School works with. And as you're aware, they basically complete a house each year, which means we need to buy another lot each year. And so that's the reason we come this evening. We are recommending the purchase of Lot Twelve, Block Three, Rolling Hills Estate Three, at a cost of seventeen thousand three hundred and eighteen dollars.
Make a motion that we approve the purchase of a lot for the Building Trades class.
Have a motion by Jeff and a second by Barbara, all in favor?
Aye.
The next item this evening is the acceptance of a donation from Sewell Elementary PTO and approval of a bid for playground equipment for Sewell Elementary. As you're aware, Sewell used to be an intermediate center, so they haven't had maybe all the playground equipment they'd like as an elementary school. So it's, I think, going to get that kind of evened out a little bit. Their PTO has worked very hard, they've had some very, very hard workers to do this, and they've raised twenty-nine thousand two hundred and seventy-seven dollars that they will pay for, and as the district has in the past, we will pay for the installation. I might mention a couple of things. As a district policy, we do require professional installation of playground equipment. And the reason for that is, while we've had some good volunteers try to do that in the past, in my tenure here here, we have had one student that the mulch on the top wasn't quite far enough. And when you have a kid who has a head meet with concrete that the poles are in, you determine you really do need professional installation, and just a liability issue that we take care of. And after the, if you approve this, I would like to have a couple other comments on that if I might, but anyway, the recommendation is to move forward with this. And if you say no, I'm not going back to the PTO and telling them somebody else gets to. I want to make that very clear.
I make a motion for approval. By Tammy and a second by Barbara, all in favor?
Aye.
One of the things that came up in this, we really did get into some discussions of American Disabilities Act. And while the equipment itself meets all the American Disabilities Act as equipment, we're also aware that in some situations, there is a sense that we may in the future need to look at hard surfaces playground with a resilient covering, because if we did have a student in a wheelchair, you know, you're, you're supposed to be able to have somebody move themselves in a self-movable wheelchair, you really can't do that on mulch. So we may be looking at a long-term process to maybe convert our playgrounds with better surfaces to make sure that all of our students have that opportunity. That will be somewhat of a costly situation, but we are looking at that, and that came up in this discussion. It kind of delayed us a little bit, and I appreciate the board's willingness to accept this kind of at the last minute. But that's one of the things that kind of put us back as we had those discussions, so I just wanted to mention that.
Ballpark, Bill, what is that, I mean, just, what, what would that cost to do a playground?
I figure someplace between fifty and a hundred thousand dollars per playground, we have eight elementary schools.
Okay, that's just under the equipment.
Right, I, I understand that.
What, what they, what they try to do is, if there's somebody, as I understand, and I won't say I'm an expert, because I'm just trying to learn on this as we kind of got involved. The concept is one, you do not want persons with disabilities not to be able to intermix with the other students. So you try to have equipment that has some things they could do, even if they are more, you know, held to the ground level. And if they are in a self, you know, where they're moving their wheelchair themselves, you want a surface that they can actually move that wheelchair over. Well, you can see in a mulch, it would be very, very difficult, it would just be very hard to do that. So I just think in long-term, it's something we ought to look at. We do have, you know, that type of thing at Bright Beginnings, if you look at it. There's some of the playground at Ross, we put in the new one, we kind of did that, when we added additional equipment, we went with the mulch. Again, we want to take care of all our kids.
It's certainly not something a PTO could raise the money to do.
No, absolutely not, this is, this should definitely be a district situation. And again, it's not something I think that we have to address all of them today, or, and we know that we have staff that, you know, if there was a child that had an issue, they would work with, and we're aware of, you know, that kind of situation. But it did come up as we discussed this, and I just wanted to kind of inform the board. Didn't want to surprise you later on and say, by the way, we may want to go, you know, do one a year or something like that as part of our capital outlay.
Dodge City, Parks and Recreation, Foundations work, kind of soft rubbery, black, rubbery type?
Yes, and one of the newer parks they have, and I'm not exactly sure what the address of it is, it's right across from the Community College on the other side of Fourteenth Street. I happen to take our little one up there, we met with some friends up there. And it has that kind of a hard surface where, you know, if you, it has some handicap parking spaces. And so a child who wasn't in a wheelchair could come, and there's some things they could do, even if they couldn't do all the things, there's a number of things they can do. So it's doable, it's just something, we, we learned a little bit in this process, and that's what's kind of amazing about this job, that there's always something else to learn, so something we hope we can take care of.
Thanks, Bill. Thanks, Bill.
Item I have is, uh, the second reading of Board of Education Policy Revisions. In case you needed to refer to any of them, we have them up on the screen. There are about thirty-five or so policy revisions recommended by the Legal Department at KASB, Kansas Association of School Boards. We've gone through them administratively. They were presented to you all at the last board meeting. Uh, you had a month, uh, to take a look at any of the questions, and with the entertaining motion, willing to ask for any more questions, you have this evening an entertaining motion to make them a part of our board policy handbook.
I'd make a motion to approve the Board of Education Policy Revisions.
A second. Motion by Jeff and a second by Tammy. All in favor?
Aye.
Right, we have Board of Education member district responsibilities. Barbara, do you have anything on Park and Rec? On past, um... In your futures, so... Tracy, do you have anything on Bright Beginnings or Head Start?
And we actually had a meeting today that, um, most of the meeting, uh, a large part of it was discussing the grants that we approved earlier this evening. And, uh, they're starting to do kindergarten enrollment and work on scheduling, uh, additional home visits for the end of the school year. There's some additional stuff. I don't have those notes in front of me.
Thank you. Location, we don't have...
Pretty contracts last month, and...
And Jeff, we don't have all night but legislating?
Well, the... Okay, I'm done. No, I mean, you know, the funding issues are still, you know, front and center, and really, the legislature, it's interesting. They're trying to maneuver around the Supreme Court. Uh, they're trying to, uh, maneuver who controls the funding. And, and I read that article, I don't, but I don't remember all the, the entities. They're trying to take the funding away...
Management of school funding in Kansas, take it away from the Department of Education and put it into the Director of Finance, which is a partisan position. Partisan-appointed position.
Then a bill to impeach the Supreme Court justices if they interfere with school funding. So, um, it's a, it's a, a busy time, and, um, to say the least, and a little, uh, little on the scary side also. There's a lot of ideas floating around that, uh, are just bizarre, to say the least. And, and the worst thing that can happen in politics is it's gotten personal. Very worst thing.
Um, I, uh, will be reviewing the district bills prior, uh, to the April meeting. I will, uh, ask Brian, um, if he can join me. Announcements Monday, March fourteenth through Friday, March eighteenth is spring break. Because of, uh, spring break, we won't have a luncheon meeting, uh, for the board in March. So our next meeting will be Monday, April eleventh, uh, here in Austin, Florida, at six o'clock. Do we have items for future board meetings? Okay, we need executive session, uh, for discussion of personnel matters, and... We need... Pretty minutes?
Motion by Tammy and a second by Barbara. All in favor?
Aye.
Five zero.
Thank you all.